Mr. Blair is going to do our pledge tonight.
Sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Sir.
I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. I believe this is going to be our last work session meeting till the first of the year. So we've had a busy, busy fall, probably busiest fall I've had since I've been on.[42.11][42.11](Laughter). And I'm halfway ready for a break. So, Mr. Odom, you want to get things started here?
I believe you... Are there any questions first on the consent agenda? Anything? Anyone to solve? I guess not.
No.
We're going to go to eight.
Number eight.
This is a 2012 Local Education Agency Compliance Report. This is very common. It's been going on for about as long as I can remember. And you... How many drinking fountains are you doing Arbor Day? Is your flag displayed? You may remember doing some of those yourself, Mr. Tack. But it's a very lengthy document that you have to check off. We send it to principals and they review it to see if they're doing it, and then they say yes or no. So, it's Local Education Agency, LEA, are required to comply with all state education laws and State Board of Education rules. The annual LEA compliance report form due on December 15th should state deficiencies and a compliance plan for each deficiency. The Commissioner of Education will not grant approval to LEAs that are not in compliance with state education laws and rules that have no Tennessee Department of Education approved plan for compliance. Every school in Rutherford County has reviewed the compliance report form, including state rules and regulations. The 2012 LEA compliance report shows there are no deficiencies for Rutherford County, so the motion will be to approve the 2012 LEA compliance report showing no deficiencies for Rutherford County schools.
Any questions?
I guess I'm just surprised it has to be approved by the school board.[153.22][153.22](Laughter).
Well, it's part of the doctrine. I think Mr. Halliday just assigned it also, I think. Every time the legislature passes a law that requires schools to do something, it appears on this compliance report, so it gets revisited. Number nine, financial matters. Teaching cafeteria manager living in high school custodian apartments. So this is what we had earlier and then pulled it from the plan. Our state auditors noticed that we had apartments in the high schools for custodial staff. And there's a bullet on page two on November 26th when we did it. It's easy to correct this issue for the local custodians or other custodians living in these apartments. We changed their job descriptions so that they are required to live there, and the apartments are no longer a taxable fringe benefit for them. We have a teacher and a cafeteria manager who are living at two of the schools. Their apartments are a taxable benefit which must be added to their paychecks to comply with the federal tax code. This $500 taxable fringe is a payroll flow-through item which nets to $0. A $500 charge to the employee offset the $500 payroll allowance. We must comply with a $500 per month taxable fringe. The net addition to the budget would be $260 to $300 per month, which is $280 to $3,400 for both employees. This amount will approximately cover the additional federal income tax, FICA, and Medicare that these employees will have deducted from their paychecks. A range between 130 and 150 per employee is shown because the FICA is 4.2% right now, may increase in January 2013. The motion will be to approve a monthly supplement through June 30th, 2013, in the 630 to 650 range, total net expenditures of $260 to $300 per month for the two custodian employees who are living in the apartments provided additional security and make certain the school property is secured at the end of the day. My recommendation is this: They did not enter this year expecting this to happen. We did not expect it to happen. Mr. Sandvig, as we talked about, as I said to you in that board meeting, I would really kind of rather than telling them, "You need to move now or you're going to be paid later," that we cover these two employees till June 30th of this year. And after June 30th, if they choose to stay and do that, then it'll be a taxable fringe benefit to them. But it doesn't look like we're cutting them out of their homes at Christmas time or we're doing something like that. We're trying to meet them part of the way for these two employees. So that would be my recommendation, but it's up to you as a board.
Well, it's invaluable having them on campus anyway, so still a good deal for us.
I have a question. If they choose to leave and we're not able to fill that void, are we going to do without in those schools? Are we going to try to find a way to come back and say, "We will offer this again"? I certainly would be open-minded to the idea that we continue this if that's what it takes to keep the apartment full.
I encourage them to try to be and see if one of the custodians would take that position. One of the problems that you run into very often with... If you have a custodian living there, they'll be there kind of summer too, and weekends and stuff. Sometimes we have maybe a cafeteria manager or some others, someone else there, a coach or something like that. You may have periods of time that they're not there. So we'd prefer if the... Unless they want to say they're going to stay, we'd prefer them really to make it a custodian if they could offer it to someone else.
And I would agree with that. I guess we'd cross bridge two or step two if that doesn't occur, see if we might want to consider something.
Number 10.
Number 10, Executive Committee Approval. This is for information only. The Rutherford County School Board Executive Committee approved on November 29th, 2012, the emergency purchase of one boiler with cutoff reset and neutralization kit for Laverne High School. The bid was awarded to Allied Boiler and Supply with a bid of $12,015 to be funded from the maintenance department fund.
Any questions?
Was it unanimous?
It was unanimous.
Yeah, I guess it was.[433.11][433.11](Laughter).
They needed a boiler.
Number 11.
Number 11, Zone Exemption Application Process for 2013-14. For Stewart Creek High School opening, there is a greater need to have accurate enrollment information to help the district plan for teacher transfers, materials, and other equipment. It is necessary to begin the zone exemption process earlier for the 2013-14 school year and to create a deadline for qualifying students to decide if they want to exercise the grandfather option. So our motion is this: To approve beginning the zone exemption process for 2013-14 on February 1st, 2013. Those students who qualify for the grandfather or sibling option must submit an exemption application to the central office no later than March 1st, 2013. For zone exemption requests to all other schools, parents who submit applications by April 15th, 2013 will be given priority consideration. And we've got a process where we very well may send letters to each person that's affected that's a sibling or grandfather option to tell them that they need to do this. We've talked with the principals and all to help us to communicate with this, jice for resources, teacher allocation, that sort of thing. For the high school, we need to get some information early. And so we give people a month, go ahead and communicate it now, but by March 1st, kind of decide whether you want to exercise that option or not.
Are we organizing any councils, only for Mr. Evans, because I think he'll probably need some by the time this process is over?
Actually, Mr. Odom, I discussed it. I think this will help because it'll get a bulk of the zone exemptions on the front end instead of... We have so many to get turned in over the summer, and that's really crunch time, so by starting two months earlier, which was my recommendation, we'll be able to get those done hopefully by the most end of the school year, and that'll just speed things up and make the summer much easier, so.
You vote it? All right, number 12.
Number 12 is for information only. This is a report on collaborative conferencing, and the committee from the Rutherford Education Association and from the school board that's representing you have been meeting through a series of conferences, and you have in your packet today a summary... Excuse me. Which Ms. Barnes can discuss if you would like, if you see an item. One of the things that the REA has requested is a memorandum of understanding, and I've asked Mr. Reed to speak to you on that. Does he have any particular advice? The law allows it, does not require it, that sort of thing? So I ask him to speak to that tonight if you would like for him to do so.
Certainly.
I don't know where we stand.
As the board knows, the REA and the negotiating team on behalf of the Board of Education have been involved with a number of meetings over the last many months to discuss any kind of employee-type related issues that are permissible under the new collaborative conferencing law. Both sides have worked on that very process at length, and we'll have another meeting in January in regards to that. Certainly, you're well represented with respect to your negotiating team now, so any issues that you want or concerns you have with regard to any employee matters or anything that's been raised that you see outlined in the memorandum that you have, feel free to contact your members of your negotiating team and express those interests to them, and they'll be happy to handle that at an upcoming meeting in January. With respect to a lot of the issues that are outlined in the memorandum you've got there, you'll see that the negotiating team on behalf of the board is kind of of the opinion that a lot of those can be addressed through board procedures and policies, and will cover a lot of the items that have been raised as concerns by the REA. To the extent you address those concerns through administrative procedures and through board policy, that protects the employees of the school system with respect to those issues and provides the employees some assurance that the board will be required to fulfill whatever requirements are outlined in those amended policies and amended procedures. So that will afford the employees an opportunity to know that their rights and any kind of interests they have are being protected through that process. Beyond that, you don't know... I know this is kind of a hot topic issue with the legislature. We don't know exactly what the legislature will do with this in the upcoming session. So in the big picture about memorandums of understanding and things like that, it may be best to wait and see what is hashed out with the legislature this legislative session to see what further direction and guidance we get from the legislature with respect to this whole matter. Because as everyone knows, that collaborative conferencing law is a new thing, just came to us last year. There's been a lot of comments and discussion about it, and what direction that will take this upcoming legislative session, I guess, is up for speculation at this point, but it's likely to have some modifications and tweaks done to it. So if that happens, that may modify what the board has to do to address those issues. So to the extent, to the specific issues that have been raised by REA, I think it's the negotiating team's position that they think a lot of those can be addressed through administrative procedures and policies which will accommodate those concerns and be able to afford the employees of Rutherford County the protection that they're looking for through those administrative procedures and the policies.
Any questions?
To a different point, I'd just be interested for Ms. Barnes, how you feel this system has worked and how much alike it is from what the past was and how much different it is? Just nuts and bolts of it probably more than anything else.
Well, as you know, we did bring in a... I'm sorry, his name is slipping my mind right now, but we had an overview of the collaborative conferencing interest-based bargaining session for both teams, and we all attended. And it is more of an open session where everybody has an opportunity to talk. It's just not one person talking to another person. Everyone else sitting there nodding their head. So we've had a lot of communication. We've met five times. We did set guidelines so that we limited our sessions to two hours each, and a lot of open communication and dialogue among members of both teams, trying to come to some consensus and conclusion and throwing out comments about every topic that's been raised. So it's been a little bit different in that respect. I think we've tried to listen to the concerns, and certainly you've been provided with a copy of the administrative procedures that were created in 2011 when the contract ended because we didn't want to go backwards. We wanted to keep a lot of the things that we'd already put in the contract alive and moving forward. So rather than just end all of that, we put it in procedures so that we continue to do that with our system through our administrative teams and our teachers. And that's the kind of the direction we've continued to move, is let's continue to keep things in procedures and not go backwards in anything. We really stress that there's been no loss to teachers. I mean, we've certainly protected our teachers and intend to. They're a valuable asset, so we want to continue in that direction. But some things, like salary, you know, we can't make a recommendation there because we just don't know what's going to happen, and we've tried to have that open discussion in our meetings. So I think it's been a good... It's been good. I don't know how to compare it to negotiations versus interest-based bargaining. I'm sure there's different varying opinions to that.
Would you dare to give a sense as to how the REA, the teacher side of things, how they feel like it has gone? Do they feel like they've been heard or welcomed in this process?
I think they feel like they've been heard. I think they feel like it's been more of a negotiation session, a give and take, as opposed to sitting down and reaching a consensus. But again, I think everybody's tried to listen and have conversation about the topics, but at some point, somebody's going to have to make a determination whether you can or cannot do things. And I use salary again as an example. If you can't give a salary adjustment or give a bonus, then somebody has to say, "No, you can't do it."
Right.
So, I mean, you have to reach a consensus, and you have to have a definitive answer at some point.
Thank you.
Ms. Barnes, how many REA members is there now?
In... Members in the organization? I don't know, because we no longer received that report. When we were under contract, we got a list of members, but so I'm not sure. At some point, there were maybe 1,500. I don't know if that number has changed or not.
I don't know. I'm just curious. Ms. Halliday?
At the end, and this may be a question for Jeff. At the end of the collaborative conferencing, is this an opportunity for them to share insight and make some modifications to the procedure manual? Are we heading toward a new contract?
Well, I think that's what Mr. Reed was saying. The PEC law allows you to reach a memorandum of understanding, or if you choose not to go that route, you can address things in policy or procedure. Our recommendation has been that we address things in policy and procedure and not have another document to have to maintain, because we can resolve these things through our avenues that we have in place now.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Yes, sir.
Let me do 13.
Legislative update.
Yes, sir. Number 13, Legislative Updates. I took it upon myself to give Mr. Blair a little homework to do, and since he represents us on the legislative end of it, I've asked him basically to do this part of it and what he thought is important, not on a state level, probably federal, I guess. Any recommendations he may have. I'm sure all of us got different views on everything, so... Mr. Blair, I'm going to turn it over to you and let you go through any way you need to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pass out to all the board members and some of our staff members basically an outline of some of the possibly more prominent legislative issues that are coming to head here with this next session. If it pleases the Chair, we'll just kind of run through them quickly and then come back and touch on the ones that you feel appropriate. I can pretty much guarantee you that vouchers and charter schools and elected superintendents has been the focal point of most of the boards throughout this state. And I talked to our legislative contact for TSBA to the legislature, Mr. Harold, today, and he's recommended that if we so desire to send resolutions to our legislative delegation, that he would recommend us not do so many that they would take them lightly or maybe disregard. So maybe if we could continue to stay in that two or three resolution package, and each issue should have its own separate resolution, is his recommendation. So, first thing on the drawing board, and Mr. Odom, you may want to jump in and make a comment or call on somebody like Jeff Sandvig for this. First, with the BEP state funding, you know, we're always somewhat antsy about that because we never know what we're going to get, I think, till later on in the year. Always, our legislative body has committed to us that they would support, you know, the BEP being appropriately approved, but with the health care initiative kicking in and with our meeting with the legislators a few weeks ago, a $70 million add-on by the federal government could make funding BEP somewhat problematic. So I don't know if Jeff would have an opinion on that, but...
It's not fully funded now.
Right, right.
Actually, Mr. Sandvig, I had this discussion yesterday, even dealing with class size and all, that many of their other laws are tied to fully funding the BEP, and if they haven't done it, they're differing legal opinions as what can be enforced if they haven't actually fully funded it. But it's not fully funded now. Jeff, whatever you...
The capital component has not been fully funded since the economic downturn, and I agree totally with Mr. over there. The State Department of Ed might hold that we are bound to the class size maxes, but you might have... We have to see what happens with that. On charter schools.
I would challenge you, our new board members, if you want to find out how good a mathematician you are, try to figure out that formula, because I haven't been able to in nine years, so. Next is the appeals process for charter applicants. Of course, TSBA believes that, you know, we should not remove the ability of local elected officials for their decision-making authority to be replaced by a non-elected body, and that seems to be what State Ed is, the direction that they're wanting to This is certainly a hot one: publicly funded vouchers, making it credit and taking dollars out of the public system to allow students to attend private schools or religious-based programs, and we could stay on that all day, but that's certainly going to be a hot topic this year.
I'd just like to make a comment on that. I think, Mr. Odom, we spoke on that earlier. If you don't mind, shed sort of your views on that just briefly.
I actually spoke with one of our legislators today, and there's probably going to be a bill introduced to pilot some voucher system in Memphis area. You know, that seems to be one of them. And I've heard this for two or three months, actually, but I heard it again today. One of the things that they began to notice that the whole... He described the voucher program, public funding, as very much like peeling an onion. When you get one layer off, there's another layer. When you look at private schools, you look at charter schools, you look at home schools, you look at... At what point do you then begin to say, "We can't fund these anymore"? And how are you equitable in all of those pieces? So his kind of projection was, "I'm not sure it's going to be the voucher piece, not the charter, the voucher piece. May take two or three years or so before this works out." So he really didn't think there would be a general voucher this year, but don't know.
Mr. Neff?
Last week at the Smarter Town Center, you know, legislators helped the meeting, and that was one of the questions that came up, and I asked them publicly, you know, if you do a voucher system, are you going to give the LEAs more money? And they could not answer. I mean, it was like you said, it's two or three years down the road, that's a question they'll have to ask.
I think we saw in one of our updates from Mr. Evans today, a copy of an article from the Tennessee, and the Franklin Special School District has already sent a resolution being against the voucher program, and quoted one of the board members as that this was like holding a match near a can of gas. So it's pretty flammable with when you start throwing in all the components of... Also, I gave you a kind of like a little narrative on some issues that we perceive, and I'm talking about TSBA, that vouchers would certainly be a step backwards in public education after the years of moving forward with the diploma project and with Common Core coming on and with the enhanced academic standards that we've... That has been integrated into the elementary and middle school, that this certainly would, again, be a giant step backwards if this was to come on board. Moving down the line with virtual school enrollments, Mr. Odom, I think you had some... Did you have some information about this pilot program and how poorly it did in East Tennessee?
Well, they had a trouble. Was it Haywood County? I'm trying to remember. That's the K-8 program.
Was it there? Okay.
And they had some difficulty with that. Actually, when you look at some of their value-added and stuff, the district itself took a pretty good hit, because really you've got people from all over the state, and they don't have a lot of contact. K-12, the national K-12 schools is the one that administers that for them. There's a new one this year. Bristol City is doing a virtual school for high school. Don't know how many is enrolled in that that's trying some. They did some of it for East Tennessee State University in that, so they've done a little bit more work locally, so that whole virtual piece is quite different. Which as they go and I were talking today, we're actually working on several courses ourself to start, to offer it virtual maybe as early as this summer with some of the software and things that we have, and teachers monitoring it. We really want to get a feel for it. Now, Metro Nashville has done some virtual school that they've done mostly with people in metro. They've taken a few beyond that. They had a number of, for instance, country music people that travel, their children travel with them. So they have a number of people. They've been doing it for two or three years. It's working fairly well, but I think the thing that people fear is somebody kind of coming in, maybe from out of state or something, creating this virtual school, you start pumping state dollars in it, ADM dollars in it, and you're getting really mixed results from it. So that's the fear, I think.
But continues to be a problem because there's no oversight by the local education.
There is not.
So... The next one is, Mr. Odom, you or Mr. Sandvig may want to talk about early graduation in the BEP funding.
There's a... We have a number of students who will graduate early. We cannot... Only thing you can collect in ADM is 1.0 per child. So if somebody elects to go to night school, day school, night school, summer school for that year, regardless, you're going to get 1.0 funding. So you have been picking up, as a board, for summer school especially, you have been picking up for many of the free reduced and others, at least part of the cost or all the cost of some students going to summer school. The night school, basically, though, is a tuition-based where people do that. We offered it at Laverne High. We've offered it... The one that's been the longest and probably the most successful has been the one at Holloway High School. When we went to a seven-period day, we're seeing a decline in the number of people that are wanting to go to night school because they have more opportunities during the day to get the 27 credits. So this year has not been as many as we have seen, you know, in prior years to do that. There's another state law that was actually passed, I believe, last year or so. A student can literally graduate early. I have not seen all the criteria to that. They had to have a high ACT score. You had to go through lots of hoops was kind of the intention for this to happen. You had to go through lots of hoops was kind of the intention for this to happen. And a student would almost have to know this starting freshman year to do that. And they did waive a few things that's required for a student that was not graduating early, but I've just seen almost no direction from the State Department of Education related to that particular law and that early graduation. Angel and Mr. Zago want to speak to that. Williamson County opposed it verbally when it was being in the legislature and asked to be exempted from it, actually.
We have, like Mr. Trump said, a few students that will graduate early. The requirements are quite restrictive now and that were in years past, since the MAB, the number MAB that they are required to take. They have made a few things more lenient than the types of things that they still does, the credits per so.
Okay, next is physical independence, and I think we kind of got off track with our legislative meeting. One of the representatives asked a question directly to us that really didn't coincide with physical independence. What TSBA and what we had discussed in the past was a special school district. And a special school district, if we're allowed to do that, the tax rate is set by the General Assembly. And so literally, we do, our funding body transfers from the county commission to the General Assembly, and then we, as the LEA, will budget and spend according to our decisions as a board. And of course, one of the representatives asked, you know, for personal opinion about forward taxing, and I gave a personal opinion, but not speaking for the board, but speaking for myself. But what this is tuned into is a special school district where the General Assembly would set the tax rate and not the county commission and not the school board.
Just from friends who've worked in special school districts, seem like how our legislative representatives tend to get a lot of advice from the county commissioners. So when they've tried to get that tax rate increased, sometimes they're running into difficulties from the commissioner's side.
Nothing's ever easy, is it?
Definitely.
Okay, next fees for inspection of records, which I think we've had some fun with in the past with some lawsuits and basically just saying, you know, it takes man-hours, it takes mechanical use, it takes materials, and just have the opportunity to ask for a fair reimbursement for going through a litany of paperwork or correspondence that someone may ask to see.
We have that, we have a policy, you know, that covers some of that for us currently.
And apparently, some of the other districts across the state must not have a, must not have a solid policy, so.
The current policy allows us to charge for copies, creating copies, and for labor associated with creating copies. This appears to be what the language says for inspection of records, which would be something totally new for everyone. That's the way it's worked?
Well, then I think it's tuned into both. And last, but certainly not least, in the nine years that I've been either in sitting out in the audience or sitting on this side of the table, the elected slash appointed director of schools continues to come up in the legislature. And over the last several years, has certainly found some footholds in some places. And fortunately, logical minds and brains have overcome some of these that would like to see us go back to the dark ages of electing a superintendent based on popularity rather than qualifications. But I'm certainly hopeful that we'll continue to go in the direction we have by having the opportunity to hire professional, educated and qualified professionals to run our school districts. And I think that's it, board members.
Anybody have any questions? I know we can't do nothing tonight, but Thursday night, I guess it would be if it's the board's wishes, come up with your recommendations, I guess, two or three.
Well, I'll give a recommendation, but of course, whatever the board decides. But I would ask the board to stay within the guidelines that Mr. Harold advised to at least state no more than three resolutions, you know, for these initiatives, I guess, if you will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Halliday?
At this point, I see, I don't know if it's the greatest threat or the greatest interest or the tightest vote on the charter applications and publicly funded vouchers. The third item, you believe, is the issue of appointed directors of schools?
Yes, sir. Just won't go away.
Comes up every year. Anybody, you got any stronger?
Just as a matter of curiosity with the board.
How would our county deal with that? I'm hopeful that we're past the point that we maybe as a board could not present, if it came to that, a candidate, present our case that we would recommend such and such person to do. I'm just, I'm rambling. I'm just curious. Where is our county, population-wise, if we got to that point? How much likelihood do you think we would clearly vote for someone, the electorate would vote for someone that is clearly qualified educator like Mr. Odom is? Or are we looking at Ned Fird coming in?
You know, with 136 different districts out there, spread from one end of the state to the other, and some being very small populace, and then, of course, we're blessed to have a, you know, the largest undergraduate university in the state and, you know, in a pretty educated populace. But, you know, we might be okay, but how many of the counties across the state, it literally would become a popularity contest? And Tennessee as a whole, which our education system at this point, you know, draws people, draws companies like Nissan and Amazon and Volkswagen, you know, who would we draw if a high percentage of our school districts were run by people unqualified? And that's terrifying to me, you know, in a economic situation that we're in since 2008 and still are.
Logistically, it's been described to me that the legislation that is proposed would allow for the county commission in that LEA or that had the correlation with that LEA, that they could have a vote that would opt in to the elected superintendent. And I think that that's probably one of the more compelling arguments that could sway our legislative delegation. I think, yes, in Rutherford County, we see the value in the appointed director of schools, and I would be frankly rather surprised if we went in any other direction. But as other counties say, well, we're not asking for you to do it in Rutherford County, we're just asking for you to give us the opportunity to do it in our county. And so I think that's one of the reasons why, again, we have to put that as one of the top three and emphasize it for our legislative delegation.
I agree.
I actually heard it, somebody that was one of those superintendents made the statement, you know, I run for office and the board was they, and they run for office. You know, both of us are independent and have to go back to it. I don't have to do necessarily what they want to do. Sounds a lot like Congress to me. Really, you've got people going different ways, so.
Any other comments? We'll take this up again Thursday. 14, general discussion by board members.
I think I've talked enough for one evening, so.
I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Tech.
I want to mention what's in your packet if...
Mr. Odom?
You have in your packet the attendance, even through today. Because several school districts have closed, I think our attendance today was 95.20%. So that's normal. High schools throughout the year will run from 93 to 95. Elementarys will typically run 94 to 96. So right now, we're not seeing those particular illness, and you can see it over several days. We are working on looking at the Blackman Elementary Specialty Zone to see what we can do since they have over 1,100 students. So we're looking at something there that what can do, primarily looking back towards Brown's Chapel. If we have to do some moving and rezoning there, a lot of those will actually affect probably most of our city parents that are attending Rutherford County schools. But we're having to look at something there to get some relief for that school. We just cannot keep putting portables because of the time it takes to serve lunch and all the other factors that go with it. So we'll talk about that after the first of the year. And I think maybe by, Mr. Sandvig, maybe by Thursday, we did meet, we had a priority list for the building program, and also probably by Thursday in your packet, we'll have that in your hands of what we recommend, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, over the about the next four or five years. You can look over that, and probably we could add it as an agenda item sometime in January and let you look at that. The Health and Ed Committee did recommend for us to come back with some things by January or February so they can begin to put it on their agenda of what to do. So you should have that maybe as early as Thursday.
Back on the Blackman Elementary situation, I would, based on what you're saying, you're probably anticipating doing something next fall, correct, for next fall?
We may have to. I mean, that may be our situation. It's just been so unusually good so much this year that it may be something that we have to take an area to deal with a couple of hundred students or something to make that work. And so we'll look at it. I mean, it's a matter of rewriting buses primarily in elementary. You have the same program, but it's a matter of rewriting buses. You're not talking about many things like you talk at high school with all the different athletics and other things. But it's literally, you know, our job is to have a high-quality educational program. And when you just pack so many students in a building sometimes, we have to start making some choices and decisions to keep that quality up there so that they can accommodate intervention programs and things for students who need the help. So we're going to have to take a look at that.
Anything else? I believe Thursday night, we're meeting at 4:30. Is that correct? Okay. Everybody put that down. Ms. Halliday, you good with that?
Just clear the way.
We'll wait. We'll do our best to wait on you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned. We'll see everybody Thursday evening.